Hi, I'm Dean Fenyette, New York City Post. Pursued to open meeting for our first meeting in audio or video recording of this public meeting, we transmit the meeting to any meeting. Attendances in the air for advice that such recordings or transitions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and our game acknowledged in committee. Our role call of those present is Andrews.
I'm here.
Uh, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Williams, Mr. DeRio.
I'm here.
Mr. God.
Here.
Mr. Machado.
Here.
Mr. Deere.
Here.
Mrs. Benson.
Here.
And your trans maker here as well. Administration that super rated schools, checking school over, working business, and uh, talent, working quickly, Miss Elizabeth Tascal. And, oh, Dr. Dr. Ralscher. And, okay, now the court secretary. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the regional committee will be on Tuesday, November 9th at 6:30 PM here in the high school library. On the same day, joint meeting with the Conference and School Committee will be held at 5:00 PM for the regional committee meeting. First up, we have, um, I'm trying to rush, but Dean would grab it slightly. The ages to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in whose whole liberty and justice are all. Next up on the agenda is student teaching learning. And, uh, this is more if you would begin, we have some guest students here.
Sure, uh, I will be talking in just a few minutes about student advisory committee, but until we have that officially in place, we do have a couple of students tonight who have volunteered to come to give a student update. We have Mackenzie Che and Sydney Crane. Both are newly elected members to student council. So if you wouldn't mind coming up?
Say dear.
Right there.
Oh, get the head of the table.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I didn't really know where you wanted us to start. I didn't really, what exactly you wanted to know, but, um, we're getting, we have like categories, so I'm gonna start with academics. Um, the end of term one is November 5th, so we're over the halfway point. We have like what two weeks left to that. Tomorrow's actually parent's conference, so Thursday we have a half day for that, but then Friday we also have a half day just for parents or students and staff. Today, the juniors actually took their PSATs, so that was exciting. And around like last week, um, we received our final GPA and class rates at us as like seniors. Um, so we were excited for that. Our seniors, like, um, early application deadlines for college applications, stuff like that, earliest and usually around November 1st, so that's really on seniors' lines right now. And, um, actually yesterday, it was exciting to report that we had a, I believe, successful lockdown in the preparation, so that was very exciting. Got to see Raider afterwards, the emotional support though. So that's pretty much that I have for academics, so I'll pass that to Sydney.
So maybe talk about the athletics. So right now, like, the fall sports are closely, everybody's on the game. Um, the Friday night is our tech afternoon football, and it's our last home game for the state game, I mean, last home football this time. So that's really exciting, so we'll see everybody in game. And we're feeling happy that we got these incentives, just like everything today, I think we're happy to say. Um, the girls and boys soccer played very good today, and, um, we played their hands and served it both, and I think we both played, I'm not sure what, but we. And, um, the press country has a meet next week, I mean, on Friday. And the fall season usually ends around the end of October unless the two qualifiers in state tournament, which you need to go to whatever, and those things are a team tournament, but right now, fall sports going pretty good, very good. So I'll pass it to McHenry.
Um, so next we have clubs. There's a lot of club activity, which is a really good thing, but they've got to get here. Um, I'm happy to say that Friday, October 15th is our workday, and I was actually put on by the Grow Up Club, you guys approved at the last school meeting. So Grow Up members, or I would say like the past week and then after school this week, we've been making purple ribbons, and then we picked out, um, like backs, I guess, um, for like domestic violence awareness. So we're cutting them out and then we're taking ribbons, we're gonna pass them up tomorrow so that hopefully everyone will wear it on Friday, October 15th, because Saturday, October 16th, is the National Domestic Violence Awareness Day. So we thought that that would be a good event for our school. Um, next, we're reaching out, which is like a community service program here, and we've been actively seeking volunteers. So we're looking for volunteers for the Halloween Fun Run in 5K, which I believe is the Somerset Earthly Educational Foundation. Last month, we also had volunteers go to a local food pantry, and then we're looking for more volunteers again for October 30th of the year, so hopefully that continues. Student council, us seniors, we had our first meeting last night. Um, the general student council is actually meeting right now, but we're here, so, um, but we're excited, we're starting to meet, plan things such as like case rallying. The seniors and juniors are trying to get a homecoming to the school, so that'll be exciting. We're, we're in the very early planning stage here, so we have to work on a lot of the logistics, but our idea is to have it on the turf. And sometime in November, it's not like a set deal yet, we have to obviously get everything approved, get approved, stuff like that, get funding and approval. Um, so yeah, we're trying for homecoming. The seniors wanna do powder puff, so that's like volleyball, the fun school, and then, um, and we have some big ideas for student council this year, so hope to keep looking at that.
So I'm gonna talk about senior club. So Model UN, like often meeting, we had our first meeting yesterday, and we're establishing like a calendar for the year, we hope to be coming up with support conferences, so that's another fun activity we're gonna run. And we're also meeting for like senior representation in the prom committee, so we're seeing like maybe a lot more representation in the class, yeah, some more please roll in. But, um, camera club is also starting up and is seeking members, and I believe that the audition for today, or yesterday, or I don't know, both of those today. And so they're being a fall player, just in case they start off, and I think it's December 12th. And, um, Deca has been running school stores and in the volleyball games, and we just received a shipment of new items to sell, so we're looking for new people here in the store. And Science and OPIA have just started up as well, and they're accepting new members, and we prepare for our first meeting, which is school meeting during February vacation at GRAM. So that's pretty cool too. And Best Studies in the Senior Community Learning School has also just started up, and they're also accepting new members, and they're trying to like figure out device activities to do this year. And Miss Shushmanover is seeking, um, members for a school advisory council, we've got that in here today, and I think it's to do what we're doing right now, so. Last night was also a music town concert from the Billy Detective, Brett's a friend of our partner, band doing classic music program. And there's also a math team meeting today, which is also seeking members.
What did you say, each day? There's also a what, after the concert, I missed it, just a math team.
Oh, I said there was a math team meeting today.
Oh, okay, okay, I thought it was each day, I said, wow, that's impressive math team.
Yeah, and they're just looking for new members, we put it on there because that doesn't sound, but there's also a dance team club that we just, they're emailed up, and so that was just established, and we have thirty prospective members, so we can have both varsity and gay students.
That's impressive.
Yeah, there's a lot of interest in that, actually.
In a dance team?
Yeah, there's a lot of dancers in our school, I didn't know that, but it's a new teacher, she teaches anatomy physiology, and she's a professional ballroom dancer, so she took up a dance club, and a lot of people are interested.
So what kind of dance, is it, is it like, if they were, if these students like belong to like a studio, they go to competitions?
Yeah, I guess so, so like, I, I'm under the impression that, um, like there are a lot of dance clubs other schools.
Yeah.
Um, and like, I think the genres would be like hip hop and like modern kind of dances, but like they compete against other schools, and it would just, I think, be separate from dance studios. I don't really know about the logistics, I just know people who have like had interest in clubs.
Great. Is there any questions, anything going on?
I have a quick question. Uh, the Pinkout Games, it was twentieth field hockey, what was the football game?
Um, the football game is Friday.
This Friday, okay. Uh, and the Raiders reaching out, was, are they, you guys looking for members, is that what's going on there too?
Um, I think it's more just, it's like a volunteer club, so they're just looking for people to sign up to do, I think this Dr. Magglio is the next, like, event, and it's the food pantry.
Great job, very impressive. This is your first time speaking at a meeting?
Well, actually, I'm, we were both here last time for Grow Up.
Okay, all right, you both did look familiar. Great job, I, I'm very impressed.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
The only question I had, I'm sorry, you know, as trans maker, um, Sydney, when you talk about Model UN?
Yes.
Is that going to be in person or virtual this year? Last year, was that virtual?
Last year, we were virtual. This year, they're starting off with like virtual meetings, but then we're trying to build to an in-person meeting through virtual, it's kind of slower and like, didn't work as well, so we're waiting to go to in-person meetings, which will be later, so we're just preparing for this.
All right, so there is the plan to have the in-person competitions, and do you have a debate too? Last night, I spoke with Mr. Chase.
Yeah, so I know Mr. Chase, I know they also just started up again, and I'm not sure if they're having virtual meetings this year, but I know that they're expected to have a lot of meetings, but I also know that they run closer to later, so they might be able to get in person, or they might be online.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? In honor of our good friend Chris Giliducci, I have to ask, is Deppa started or?
Okay, so I'm the vice president for Deppa, and so right now, we're just trying to like get everything, like composed, like people to pick their, um, like categories, and so we haven't started to have meetings quite yet with everybody. We did have like our information meeting for every different category, but we're gonna start having like practice roll plays and everything like that during the winter time, but right now, we're just like running the store and just doing, and trying to get like, um, we have like this book, and we picked clothes to sell at the store.
Cool, thank you.
All right, thank you ladies for joining us. So you've got two meetings in a row, you know that they have our next one, you're always welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Trans maker, continue with that and to the other thing.
Uh, so I did want to report that, uh, we have hired a director of facilities, uh, share briefly, uh, some of his background. Emmanuel Al, uh, he is coming to us from University of Massachusetts. Uh, he's been working for the UMass system for, uh, for about the past twenty years or so. Uh, he's had a number of different roles, he started out as operation manager for the housing and residential life at UMass Dartmouth, uh, then became assistant director of house security grounds, assistant director of facilities and the discipline plant at UMass Dartmouth, uh, and then, uh, for the past two years, he's actually been the assistant director of custodial operations west at UMass Amherst. Uh, so if anyone was familiar with UMass Amherst, the five residential towers, four by residential tower, twenty-two stories and all that, uh, that he managed the day-to-day operations of all, um, of those buildings, and had over two hundred custodians and maintenance workers reporting directly to him. So he's coming to us with a wealth of experience, when Sitaro and I interviewed him, we bargained for a second interview, it consisted of visiting the south elementary, the middle school, and the high school, with, um, really having the interview taking place while he's also walking around visiting his schools, the grounds, and just commenting on different things that, uh, he was observing. Uh, he was into suiting and on his back looking under sinks, and, you know, he was, uh, in our mechanical room and get extensive knowledge of the systems that we have, uh, we think he's really, he's known to start his really ground running. His first official day will be October 25th, so we'll have about a two-month overlap with Carlos, uh, as he transitions in and Carlos transitions, uh, so there'll be that sharing of, uh, knowledge between, uh, the two.
Anything you want to add, Mr. Al? I'm just excited that we're able to find, if we can come in and the opportunity for that person to shadow Carlos, I think he's open to, to keep things right when you have to keep them right, and just bring us that next one too, so.
And he seems to have a very proactive approach rather than, you know, trying to identify problems before they become problems, uh, rather than reacting, so, uh, that was also evident while we were talking with him and just having conversations while we were in the school space.
So his last position, was that UMass Amherst?
He's currently at UMass Amherst.
So is he, that's a long commute, is he, is he driving down here?
Uh, oh, he, he lives locally and is commuting to Amherst.
Oh, okay, you got it.
Yeah. I get the impression of UMass on the guy, I'm like, UMass.
Yeah. Yep.
So, uh, Mr. Tarot was just reminding me that, uh, for the first round of interviews
that we had, we did have for Mr. Pierce and, um, Mr. McDonald participating with us, uh, as, as well as Jesse Welch, our job coordinator, and then that second round, it was, uh, Mr. Tarot, Miss Welch, and myself, with the two final candidates, and they were both very good candidates, they were very strong, but, uh, the experience here that Mr. Al has had, uh, just works to the top.
Congratulations.
Yeah, a really great, great job. Uh, school improvement plan, I know Mr. Pierce has been asking about this, Dr. Ralsford, well, now that we have the vision of the graduate established, Dr. Ralsford connected with the school council last week, uh, to begin, uh, developing that school improvement plan for the ASK. Uh, it's, uh, it's called the school growth plan, uh, it's really one of the same, and Dr. Ralsford, um, we're planning on having her present that plan to this committee at the December 7th. Mackenzie, which you talked about the PSATs taking place today for our juniors, based on the last year's PSAT, um, administration to our current seniors, uh, we have, we've been able to recognize two students who, uh, who just scored tremendously well. So last year, there were one and a half million high school juniors took the PSAT, and about the top fifty thousand are recognized for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Uh, of those top fifty thousand, uh, the, the top sixteen are sort of separated from the other thirty-four thousand, and the, the top sixteen, so roughly the sixty thousand of one percent are identified as National Merit semifinalists. Mia Russ, who was also, uh, one of the presenters at our last meeting with the Grow Up Club, uh, was, uh, is one of those National Merit semifinalists, uh, she'll now go to the running for the National Merit finalist positions. And, uh, Jayce Ferber, uh, is the other student who was, uh, recognized as a National Merit Commended Scholar, she fell within the top fifty thousand but not the top sixteen thousand, so probably the top three percent or so of all test takers. So congratulations to Mia and Jayce for their academic achievements. Um, Mackenzie, I think it was Mackenzie who also mentioned the student advisory committee. Uh, so with the recent elections that we just had, uh, one of the options that students could have, uh, run for was to be a member of that student advisory committee, there were no takers, so we didn't have anyone on the ballot for that, so yesterday, I sent an email to all of our students, uh, defining, you know, really explaining what the role of, of that position is, and asking students if they were interested to email me, and I have received above seven or eight emails since then of students expressing that interest. Uh, so the, I'll, I'll lead with Dr. Ralsford and, who is the representative? Uh, the law says that at least five members, so it doesn't say it has to be five, so maybe we'll figure out how many students are interested, and then identify if we want to have an election or where we only, we'll pick the top five, or if we have eight or nine students, maybe, uh, those eight or nine could, could be that board, uh, but we'll see how many students are actually expressing interest. Uh, so I hope to have an update for you in the next few weeks about that. Uh, at our last meeting also, uh, Mr. Machado inquired about, um, several health officer related concerns, um, that had, uh, had recently come to his attention, our attention, and I did send the school committees an email just to explain, summarizing that, but, um, just to, since Mr. Machado asked for it to be, uh, investigated, just to summarize publicly, uh, our school nurses, so there were two things, one, uh, one access do our nurses have, or substitute nurses, or our nurses when they are filling in for, uh, in another building? Uh, what access to an active student's medical records? And then there was also a question or concern if, uh, nurses were denied giving medication, such as insulin, to students. Uh, our nurse leader investigated this, will follow our nurses, and, uh, reported back to me that, um, all school nurses, including substitute nurses, have access to students' medical charts, every student has a PPRO medical chart, uh, which earned a lot of P, and when they are filling in for the building, they have access, uh, to that information. Uh, and then the, uh, the second was regarding the medication, school nurses said that they have never withheld any medication, including insulin, uh, from students unless a doctor's note had expired. Uh, so as long as there is an active doctor's note, the medication is given to students. So I think those were the two main concerns, I think, that Mr. Machado. Uh, and then just moving on quickly to the last one, uh, I think, uh, I think you've actually mentioned all three of the package conferences on tomorrow, we've got a music town parade this Sunday, one o'clock, and the education foundations 5K and Fun Run are taking place on October 30th, the 5K 9 AM, the Fun Run at 10 AM, costumes are encouraged. Okay, so this, this information we can, I know Dr. Ralsford has sent it in our family newsletter, we have some information on the websites and social media, if anyone wants to sign up for that. Are there any questions?
I just, I just wanna thank you and the lead nurse to do that investigation and kind of put those on the, thank you. You're welcome.
I got a, I got one question. I heard on the radio that Hopkins can apply for the mask exemption, having achieved an eighty percent vaccination rate in the high school. Do you know what our vaccine, high school vaccination rate is at this point?
Uh, the, the actual rate here at the high schools, I don't know, uh, but I will tell you, uh, within just the towns of Somerset and Berkeley, for the sixteen to nineteen year old population, sixty-nine percent of students in Somerset, uh, sixty-nine percent of all sixteen to nineteen year olds in Somerset are now vaccinated, sixty-four percent of that age group in Berkeley are vaccinated. And in the twelve to fifteen year old, uh, age group, it's forty-nine percent in Somerset, forty-seven percent in Berkeley. So given those numbers, I know we're not at eighty percent yet, uh, but once we factor in our stats, um, we're getting closer, we are definitely getting closer. Uh, and as we do, we'll, we're gonna have to find a way, um, of verifying the information that's there. Our school nurses do have access to the, uh, I wanna say the M-I-I-S system, which, um, which identifies Massachusetts residents who have received the vaccinations in Massachusetts. Uh, we do have some, maybe whoever received it in morale, and we don't have the information, but once we get close, we should be able to gather that information. I don't want to add any percent.
Just a, just a thought, uh, but, um, perhaps we could, I'm not sure how many of our high school students have WGH radio as their first choice on radio, but that's my first choice, so that's where I heard about this, and, uh, I'm just wondering if we could kind of publicize to the students that Hopkins was the first in the state, and that we're not that far off, just maybe to encourage, uh, students, uh, to, you know, try to get over, over that hurdle, but I know I'm sitting here kind of warm in a mask, and I think they're great to, uh, you know, support the fact that they have to wear, have to wear masks, but it would be great if you could get that one approved.
Uh, this afternoon, we had, Super Trans had a conference call with Commissioner Riley, and he indicated that, uh, this is believed that four or five districts in the state have now, uh, put an petition for that, uh, so, uh, districts are getting there.
Mr. Trans, any questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Swinover, my understanding seventy percent population is considered vaccinated, seventy percent is considered vaccinated? I'm just kinda curious, is there a reason for the eighty percent? Did Commissioner Riley give you any reason, ignore this number of eighty percent? It just seems like an awful high number.
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, just kidding.
Any questions? Moving on to new business, I'm the first, I'm doing a new business, I'm going to repeat myself. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm replying to that, oh, we choose, yes.
Okay, like this, like, I am, yeah, okay, he's, he just something, oh. So, hello, everybody. I'm gonna move on my props. Okay. So we're gonna talk a little bit about MCAS. We have, obviously, Mr. Swinover and Dr. Ralsford, our principal is here tonight, um, they are going to hop in, um, anything that they think they might like to add along the way, um, or we can wait until the end if that's more convenient for you, um, but we're collaboratively on the visitation. Oh, just can I? I didn't want to distract you during the opening credits. So, I'm actually gonna go down the other end, if you can't hear me, just raise your hand or give a wave, um, not, Mr. Machado, most people can hear me, I can project. Um, so our goals for tonight, we are gonna provide an overview for you of our 2021 MCAS achievement results, we're gonna take a look, just a quick review of our vision of the graduate, which you actually glanced on the first slide, we're gonna review our district priorities, um, 2021, uh, 22 have changed slightly, um, but we will talk a little bit about what that looks like, and then, uh, we will, uh, look at our action steps and how they align with the mass, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education acceleration road maps. So, um, we're, we are sharing, you'll notice this evening, we're going to talk about our ELA and our math results, our science results are not included, and the reason that they are not included is because of the cycle of the, um, I'm sorry, the science results are not included because of the cycle of how the MCAS results come out, so they will not be coming out until the future, so they are not included this evening.
Okay, is there a question?
Please.
Uh, so because the science test is given in the freshman year, results are only released each fall for that sophomore class, so the science results from this past spring are embargoed until the next summer, or, or fall, whatever. The spring 2022 math, you know, he scores, they release them all from grade ten at the same company.
So.
That, okay, I, I find that, I mean, it's ridiculous, I mean, I understand the issue, but, I mean, we're just looking, we're just looking to see how we can bear what's around the district, you understand, and COVID had a big impact, but with all that data from us, just to, to use as a guide as to where we should be focused and that kind of thing, just boggles my mind. Does that, and does that mean because with MCAS were canceled the previous year, that means we're not gonna have any science scores for a year?
Correct.
Sorry, you're wrong, but.
No, not a problem at all. So you're gonna notice on the left-hand side are the 2019 scores, because those are the most recent scores that we have before this year, 2021. The four categories, exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations are the categories. You can see, uh, the numbers there are actually percentages, the blue column is Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, the gray column is compared to the state, so those are the state numbers. So those are the state numbers in the gray column. Also notice down at the bottom, there are green squares with scaled scores. We also included those, so you can see the comparison from 2019 to 2021, both the school and the state.
Can we look at the scale score? Five hundred is the minimum cutoff for the average state. Four ninety-nine. Four ninety, for a scale score, four ninety-nine is not meeting five hundred as mean. So just to give an idea of where, where we are.
And that's state, that's the state median, the state average?
The state average, five seven point three in the E L A, twenty twenty-one, and ours is five thirteen.
What's the highest score that we can achieve?
Oh, exceeding, the highest score for exceeding point, yeah, is it five forty? I'm not sure what, I'm not sure beating goes to five twenty or five forty, and the exceeding is either five forty, five sixty.
I think it's five sixty.
Go to sixty-two.
I think it's sixty.
You think it's five sixty?
So again, the setup is the same for our math scores, 2019 on the left, 2021 on the right. Again, the scale scores are down below.
I'm sorry, what's going on? Still got it?
I can.
Wait for a second.
I sure can.
So what you'll see here, and I know we'll, we'll see this, I think we see this on the comments line, but seventy percent of our students in 2019 met varsity with a standard, fifty-four to seventeen. Seventy percent of our students in 2021 were beating varsity with a standard. When you look at that scale score down below, you'll see that the, our students did better. This was increased, even though our percentage, overall percentage of kids beating the standard did not change, but we did shift. You'll see that we have a ten percent drop of students beating the standards, but a ten percent gain in kids exceeding the standard. So all, while the, the top two categories is still seventy percent, within that seventy percent, we're seeing a shift from beating to exceeding. It's also represented by the scale. And then when you see this, the next slide of math, you'll see the more state trend where it's shifting, although in that was really a statewide pattern. Sorry for.
No, you're doing, team, yay team. [laughing] The last thing that I see on the score for all, for the two years, actually minutes from reading, I believe, what happened in the state.
Right.
Mm-hmm. The next two, the next two slides, we're gonna, well, we'll take a look at E L A. I, I hope that you can see these numbers. I think that you also have a copy of this presentation if you want to look on your screen. Distance is better for me now, but things are still fairly small. So we did do comparative of our area schools. I think these are our conference.
S C C.
S C C.
Let's start with that.
We did include Dartmouth and Westport, our area schools. Again, we have, we did include an additional column, that far left column is exceeding, it's the combination of exceeding, meeting expectations, that's the percentage, and then exceeding, beating, partially meeting, and not. So Somerset Berkeley is hybrid. So some of the conversation that we had when we were talking about these comparisons, typically we have similar playing fields in terms of education in schools, right? We have similar conditions. There are variables, there certainly are variables, but we were actually looking at these different schools and talking a little bit about the various situations in terms of remote learning and hybrid learning. When we were remote or switching to hybrid, what the models looked like, how often students were in school or out of school, the options and opportunities that different schools offered related to learning last year. And we seem to all be in agreement that the comparisons were not apples to apples. And so again, the, the situation in terms of COVID was certainly similar and, but there are a lot of variables. So it's just something that, that we, we're putting out there and we'd like to be mindful of. I'm gonna click to the next slide, and this is math. Again, same schools, same columns.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why are there such significant variables in E L A and not in math? When I look at these comparisons, and I understand completely that last year was an exceptional year, and so what I'm looking for is guidance as to how we perform relative to other schools in our area. And when I look at the math schools, as has been in the past, and, and I, I often look to Old Rochester for comparison, because I think this class tended to be very good. We, we were extremely close to Old Rochester in terms of our math scores. There were only a couple of others, there were only a couple of other schools that are at the same level as we were. So I think we did very, very well in math, but when you look at our E L A scores, again, this is relative, there were three school, schools that scored at the same level as us and one below, and all of the rest have better scores than we did. So the suggestion that, you know, there were different variables, some kids were in school and one, and other kids doesn't impress me in a great deal, because if it didn't, yeah, if it didn't play out in math, it won't play out in E L A.
So could you, could, could I just ask? I, I hear what you're saying. Could you give me a chance to maybe get to that? And if you still have the question after I've gone through some of the other things that I share, I'd be happy to circle back. Would that be reasonable?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm launching into it soon. So our vision of the graduate, again, this is really the core of where we are, are going. And when we're making choices and decisions, we are considering and contemplating these areas in terms of our vision. We want our students, our graduates to be resilient, academic, independent, digital citizens, digital citizens, empathetic, and respectful. So, you know, one of, you may not know this, but one of my favorite words is marinate. And so there, especially when we're working on things like this and collaboratively, we have a lot of conversation about it, but we also ponder it, right? So there are texts that are happening even after the meeting, or, you know, as we're kind of thinking about these things, I think Dr. Ralsford was actually marinating earlier today, maybe on her drive or her commute, or on her way back to work. But one of the things that I was actually thinking about is I was looking at this, this afternoon, is M-CAS is a, it's an academic measure, right? And really, it's, it's why we're here. And yet, as we're talking about our vision of the Somerset Berkeley graduate, there's one area that's academic, and all the others are about the people that we'd like to send out into the world. And so it's important, M-CAS is important, and it's a measure, but it, it's a snapshot in time. So again, as we're heading towards our, our vision of the graduate, I, I would just like us, again, I'm just trying to bring some of these pieces to the forefront of our minds as, as we consider next steps. So these are going to look really familiar to you, I think, because we talked about them throughout the course of last year. And we talked a lot about our priorities and that social and emotional well-being of our students, of our faculty staff, of our families. It was our top priority. We talked about it a lot throughout the course of, well, really from March of 2020 all the way up to the end of the school year. It continues to be one of our top priorities. A structured yet flexible learning framework that provides access to essential learning standards and an opportunity for deeper understanding. Again, that, that is what I just referred to earlier in terms of the various models. We did have a fairly large number of students who were 100% remote. We also, throughout the course of the year, offered the option to be working from home if circumstances lent themselves to that, right? And so I think that we were looking at some of the previous presentations from last year, and in November of 2020, we had 275 students who were 100% remote. In April of 2021, we had 272 students who were still officially considered to be remote students. That's about 26% of our student body. So again, these are just some of the, the numbers that, that we'd like you to be aware of, and that, the flexibility that we were providing was in response to family concerns and, again, doing the best that we could for our students. Here, you're going to notice number three is a different color. The reason that number three is a different color is because we had actually listed prior to this, the other version that you saw, was about preventing academic regression, right? We were trying to work really hard to make sure kids did not move backward. And then when we came back to school for the 2020, 2021 school year, we were focused on ensuring that kids had the appropriate instruction. Again, we had the screen work in place. With our acceleration roadmap that was released by DESI, this is the classroom educator edition. There's also a school leader edition. These are, these are available online for your viewing pleasure. But they are actually roadmaps to what schools should consider and should be doing as we have come back to school during the 21, 22 school year. So we want to ensure that strong grade, strong grade appropriate instruction with just-in-time scaffolds when they're needed, and I'm gonna talk more about that in just a moment. And finally, number four, again, you'll recognize, a strong commitment to learning. These have not changed. I'm sorry.
So that came in number three was, I just want to make sure I understand, motivated by what came out in those guidelines?
Correct.
Those guidelines are general instructions or guidelines for all districts coming back. It wasn't a specific, you know, based on what you've seen in your district. This is general.
Correct. All right. So again, as you know, the state has provided guidance, but not edicts of any kind other than the safety requirements. So there are things that they have put in place or said, you know, we must follow, or these are strong recommendations, but school districts responded as they saw fit. So what you'll see here, this is actually from the acceleration roadmap. The roadmap is organized around three overarching priorities, which are grounded in research and were developed through extensive stakeholder feedback. One, foster a sense of belonging and partnership among students and families. It was, again, as you saw in our priorities previously, that was where we were and what we will continue to do. Number two, continuously monitor students' understanding. And three, ensure strong grade appropriate instruction with just-in-time scaffolds when they are needed. Again, I'm not plagiarizing, I actually did take it, copy and paste it. So giving full credit to the state, and these are the guiding factors. So you may have heard us talk about remediation or R T I, response to intervention, where we would talk about going and, again, a traditional remediation definition is that students may receive work better suited for earlier grades based on the misconceptions that they must master all past concepts before accessing grade level work. That is not what we are doing. The learning acceleration, as outlined in these acceleration roadmaps, center on all students receiving consistent access to grade level work with targeted scaffolds to make it accessible. So scaffolds, again, my mental picture is always the scaffolding that is moving up a building when there is some sort of maybe refurbishing or reconstruction. So you're, there, it is filling in the holes or the gaps wherever they're needed, but it doesn't mean that you're knocking it all down and starting over. So this is actually a slide that we used on the very first day of school in the 2020, 2021 school year. So that was a year ago. And we were looking, and we went back and we looked at our curriculum, and we identified the essential learning standards. That's the bullseye, the smallest circle. Our need-to-know standards, those are the things that you need to know as they relate to the essential learning standards. And the nice-to-know, those are the standards that are on the outside, they're, they are maybe extension, they might be a deeper dive if they were a high interest area, but it's a nice-to-know standard and does not fall into the other two categories. We started this over a year ago, and when this came out, and teachers and contact corners were looking at it, they were like, hey, we've already been doing this. Like, what? So it was really kind of exciting, right? We're feeling that we are ahead of the curve, we have this in place. So our teams are going, are going back. And so, Mr. Pierce, this is, I'm going to attempt to answer your question, and then we can certainly circle back if you have another one. We're going to go back and we're gonna look at, we have already started the very first day of school in 21, 22, go back and look at those essential learning standards. Sometimes maybe we didn't narrow them enough. Sometimes the data may be telling us that we, we chose something, and this M-CAS data, again, maybe the item analysis, is indicating that that was not as high of a priority as we expected it to be, and we're going to make a shift. So we're going to use the data to inform those decisions, and as you may have noticed, the green light, yellow light, red light, it's like a, like traffic lights. So the green or the gold, no matter what, the yellow, it, they may slow you down, but you need them in order to move forward, and then the red, again, would be as needed. So that also means that we need to consider how we assess or how we identify those gaps, because we are not going back to the previous course. We've got to just fill the gaps as it relates to the essential learning standards for the course that the students are currently in. So I did color quoted on this also, I'm a big fan. So we might use pre-assessment, so that might be at the beginning of a unit, that we would determine where students are and maybe assess some of those standards that they need to know in order to move forward in what we're studying. Or we would be using, again, which, which we, our teachers use anyway, some formative assessment, and some people call it informative assessment. It's to inform the teacher of where students are in their progression toward the, meeting those standards or those essential learning standards. And then teachers would design maybe a mini lesson related to where, what those gaps are. So maybe a whole class mini lesson, or it may be students who maybe had somebody who had an R name, had an experience, or don't recall whatever that, that standard was, or that skill, knowledge, or understanding. So they might run, put together some mini lessons to fill those gaps, and then we'd be able to move together, move forward as a class. Course timeline check-ins, we do have our common planning time, our department meetings, and our professional development days. Actually, I think our first two or three professional development days, thank you, have been dedicated to this essential learning standard work, but also checking in on those timelines. Sometimes, as teachers, we feel really pressed for time because we have to ensure that we get everything matched in there. It's, it is how we think. What we're asking is to take a step back and, again, assess what those essential learning standards are and focus and stay on that pathway if we need to make an adjustment, because students sometimes need a little extra time, that we're able to make those adjustments, but we still want to backward design them. And what that means is beginning with the end in mind, so, Mr. Pierce, to your, to your point, looking at where some of those gaps are, so that when we take M-CAS next time, we have identified. so that when we take MCAS next time, we have identified, again, what that data is in those item analysis reports. And we have adjusted our learning standards that we have in class to ensure that students are getting there. We're filling in the gaps. And that we are hopeful that our scores would improve next time. Continue to design student-centered lessons to deepen authentic learning. Again, we're back to that vision of the graduate. We are working really hard to ensure that students have the opportunity to do the doing. It does take more time for students to do the doing. And that's not what MCAS is necessarily assessing. But it does help build the problem-solving and the logic and the thinking skills that students need to be successful in real life and then also on MCAS. Using data to determine school-wide focus areas. Again, Mr. Pierce, to your question, it's not just about ELA. It's not just about our English teachers. These are the communication skills that affect all of our students and are relevant throughout our curriculum. So in the course of our conversation, we talked about what are the standards or the skills, knowledge, and understandings that transfer to other content areas, but also to new and real-world situations? And how do we continue to cultivate and embed those pieces in the curriculum instruction and assessment that we offer throughout the summer separate regional high school? So that is one of the things that we're very conscious of and will be part of our plan. Question?
So when you're using data, so you're, you're looking at the data that comes from these M-MASS tests, right? For 10th graders, is 10th graders in math? And you're using that data to inform of how you're going to teach 10th graders this year? But it's a different cohort of students. So I just, I'm keeping that in the back of my mind, that that's always kind of a little bit of a misfortune because students are different. We know that, right? Are you also using any of that, you talk about scaffolding and keeping people moving up? Are you using that data to help inform those 10th graders, those now 11th graders as they progress to?
So that, yes, that will be part of the conversation. It is what we do anyway in terms of our process. But it is something that we will continue to do. And again, when you're looking kind of at that school-wide model, it helps to foster that approach that you've just described. There was a hand up. Dr. Brossford?
Well, this got me. I think you made a really good point about how this is driving what we're doing with 10th graders, but it's also driving what we did with 9th graders. And another point that I think we have to keep in mind when we're talking about this data is the fact that this cohort of students that we have this MCAS data on, they haven't had a normal year of high school until right now, if you want to call this normal. This is their first normal year of high school. So I think some of the data, maybe some of the dips in both the math and the English data, because if you look back at 2019 data versus now, there were dips in both, has to do with how important 9th and 10th grade year is to the success of our students. And, I mean, let's be honest, we were all flying by the seat of our pants in March, March 13th, when we all went out, until the end of that year. So there was a whole chunk, March to June, of their 9th grade year. And then certainly we came back, but we were being very flexible last year with what we were allowing students to do. In terms of remote hybrid, we had students that on the books were hybrid or in-person learners that were not truly doing that. There were some classes where there would be three students at a class. On paper, there was supposed to be 12. And we were being very flexible with that. There are other districts that were not as flexible as we were. There were other districts that did not take the remote learners into the classroom. They put them in different programs. And no judgment, but there were a lot of different things that, you know, things that happened. And I think that's a really good point, that this data is not only going to drive now what we're focusing with the 10th grade, but also with the 9th grade. And if I keep talking, I'm going to spoil the lead because the reading specialist is going to have to come in.
You're doing great, Chris. So, so actually, some of what Dr. Brossford was just talking about also, we did hire a reading specialist this year, or we have filled that position. It was somebody that we already had.
And he's working not only with ELA, but he's in cross-disciplines. All the way from, he's in health classes right now, to math classes, to social studies. And I personally think that's the area that we really need to focus on, is the reading and the writing across our entire curriculum, our entire school. As Ms. Haslam said, it's not just about ELA. It's not just about the ELA department. This isn't, this isn't that, you know, their test. It's our whole school. And I think we have to be mindful, especially with some of, maybe our more reluctant learners or students that haven't been in-person learning for a year and a half. Getting them back on track requires reading and writing to be being done in all of our classroom across the whole world. It's everyone's responsibility. I'm sorry, I'm taken away.
No, you're doing great. This is what teamwork looks like. I love it. Using our BlueRater block to provide academic support for students in need. I know that's the bullet up above, but that is something that, again, we're really encouraging our students to go for that additional support, to ask questions. Related to additional support?
And we also, just with BlueRater block, we, as an admin team, Jennifer Ashley did the bulk of it as our instructional technology specialist. We spent hours and hours making sure that students are in correct BlueRater blocks. If they're struggling in certain subjects, that's where they are for BlueRater block to make, and we eyeball students to make sure of that. Now, not every student's in that boat. There are students doing other things, doing some independent work. But the students that need that extra support are where they need to be with content teachers that can help them either with classes that they filled last year or classes that they're currently studying.
And again, informed by data. This is not the student or teacher recommendations. The data is informing those choices and where students will be.
Good question. Dr. Brossford, you mentioned you're assigning who would be in these classes. Is that what's going on?
So what we did, I'm just going to talk my days, last week is our students met with a teacher. The teacher, they actually had like a parent-teacher conference. It was a student-teacher conference with students saying, okay, what's going on? They looked at grades. And we made decisions based on students' grades as to where they belonged in terms of classes for the next five weeks. And they're going to get targeted instruction in areas that they're struggling in. And if students were unable to make the decision or maybe didn't make a correct choice, we then went back and looked at the students that didn't sign up or things like that and made sure that they were where they needed to be. It took a painful amount of time, but we did it.
Congratulations.
Well, I'm taking credit right now because I'm here. Jen Ashley, Kim Dukudo, and our guidance department did the bulk of this work. It was not me. But we did a lot, like, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work to get that done. And our teachers did it too. We actually had kind of a pep rally. It was my second in-person faculty meeting ever as a principal. And we did it the day before. We did this big, you know, choose, choose your adventure BlueRater block to kind of say to the faculty, you guys are on the front lines. And if you guys do what we need to do, we're all going to get this done. It's going to work for the rest of the year, and we got it done. So that's where we are.
I'm so impressed that you, that's a pivot from my experience here to have the students actually take a leadership role in their learning. You recall, we had Pittsfield come and talk to us about how we did that. That's what I'm envisioning. You know, if the student is at a table with a teacher saying, let me look at my grades. What do I need to do it? You're empowering them to.
And every five weeks, we're going to do that to make sure that they, you know, maybe they remediate themselves and now they don't need help in math anymore. Now they can either go somewhere else. Or we are giving kids opportunities, our juniors and seniors, for independent work. You may recall there's also some guidance and SCL work going on with the younger kids in our 9th and 10th grade during that time as well. But like I said, it was a lot, a lot of expectation on the students. When all was said and done, there were about 100 kids that weren't signed up in terms of kids that were absent. Maybe they forgot to do what they were supposed to do. But that's not bad when you have 1,000 kids in the building. So between the teachers and the kids, I think we did a really nice job. Our guidance staff, like I said, everybody really pulled together and got it done. And that was, you know, we talked a lot about BlueRater block. That's the point of BlueRater block this year is to kind of do some of this targeted acceleration.
Excellent. Thank you. I do want to also say that the work that we're talking about or that Dr. Brossford just referred to, related to those student seminars for freshmen and sophomores are connected to innovation pathways. So we have continued with that work to ensure that our students are in a position to move down those pathways for computer science or biomedical, or biotech, which is also a really exciting thing just in and of itself. So our after-school course support, that would be maybe some tutoring sessions after school. Again, targeted, skill-specific or content-specific. Also, individual student or small group tutoring. And so we've talked about the possibility of if, even if it doesn't work out, that it could necessarily be in-person immediately after school because kids have activities and they have some other things. And we want to ensure that they're still getting the support that they need or that they're not missing out on those activities because they're not academically eligible or they're struggling academically and they have to choose. So we even talked about maybe some online options for students to get some of that tutoring and get that focused, targeted help and support. And also, our summer 2022 Acceleration Academy, we did run it in 2021. We were looking at planning something comparable in 2022 for both English, ELA, and STEM. So whether it be science and math separately or we combine them. And we would also, we did offer it for our freshmen and our sophomores this year. And we would look to continue that same opportunity that's coming here. We also would consider how we might plan the weeks so that we can maximize the number of students who would participate. So, Mr. Pierce, I'm going to bounce back to you because I was trying to answer your question with our action steps in our plans. Did that answer your question out quickly, or do you have a follow-up?
No, I'm glad that we recognized that there are areas we need to focus on and that we're working on. My observation was, on a comparative basis, I was concerned. I thought we were doing very well comparatively in math, but not so well comparatively in English. And I understand that English impacts across the spectrum and all that. So it's fine. I just, I'm glad that you're aware of this. I have some additional questions about science if I could, once you're finished with your presentation.
Okay, I'm going to field questions and then you can go clear. Any other questions?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, I'm looking at the data you shared, and I see that we've got participation rates for 2021 ELA and math. I don't think I'm seeing participation rates for like 2019. I don't need the exact number. I'm just wondering if, I would expect maybe our participation last year might have been a little bit lower than is typical. But I just am wondering if it was similar or if there's a difference there.
If it did decrease, absolutely. We are, our participation, Dr. Brossford and I were talking about, and Miss Assam were talking about this earlier today. At the high school level, we really don't have kids who opt out or just refuse to test. We may have a student, literally a single student or so, every other year perhaps, who does not take the test for some reason and usually is due to hospitalization or something like that, where they're just unable to test, even in that setting. But it's, we're usually 99. something percent participation, if not 100%. So having a 95, 94, or 96% participation rate is a decrease for us.
Which would make sense if you know what I'm saying. And so, anyway, I think that's what I was hoping to keep in mind. I'm not, I love the approach to how you're using this in warm instruction this year. I'm not too concerned about, I don't think it's apples to apples, but, you know, for a lot of reasons. And I'm not too concerned, but I would be fair to other districts for all those reasons. I'm thinking more about the student growth, which, you know, probably wasn't so great last year. But I'd be more interested to see how these, you know, grow actively. It's one data point. I'm a lot more interested in a course-specific, some new assessments and things like that. I think that is a lot of information apart from doing it, so.
And as you know, you can keep digging a little bit deeper with the data that we have here. And you just mentioned growth. And for ELA, whereas we were 70% in 2019 and you didn't see the 70% this year, the state average actually went up. I think it was a 61%, perhaps, in 2019, 64%. So whereas we did remain the same, we did see in English, an actual increase across the state in ELA. And that drop, overall drop in math, and our decrease in math, we did go from 72 to 66.
I don't have the math.
It goes from 72 to 66, a six-point drop there. Whereas other districts had larger drops than us, right? So then you're looking at ELA where we're consistent, but others grew a little bit more. In math, we did comparatively well, whereas other districts had larger drops. Growth specifically in ELA, which is the one we're talking about here, our growth, our median growth was 60 in ELA. So even though we didn't have, our overall percentage shift, didn't shift, the growth was actually very good in ELA compared to 2019. So you're just, you're trying to make sense of all this data. We're seeing our exceeds grow. Our growth is strong, but the overall percentage didn't shift. So we're going to continue to dig a little bit deeper in that. And I do know when Dr. Brossford was talking about other pieces of data too, along with this, I know Dr. Ju said into Lawrence and ELA and math, we'll also look at our PSAT data, our SAT data. And they will use that as another resource to help identify some of our strengths, some of the areas where we need to improve on, cross-reference that with what MCAS is telling us, and try to identify some other, you know, see if they're actually aligned with each other, if they're pointing to some of the same patterns. And then what we, with that, in addition to assessments that we have in MCAS.
First, I want to say thank you for the presentation, putting it together, and for the holistic way that you're using the data to make some adjustments. Testing is something that I feel very strongly about, so I just want to share in comments. You know, historically, standardized tests have been used as a way to gauge intelligence, right? Who's smart and who's not. Ever since the implementation of No Child Left Behind, we've had years of research that now show us that standardized test scores do not determine success in life. They do not determine, you know, how well people do, even in college. We also know, which is why I loved the presentation. I loved your comment about the resilient academic, independent digital citizens, you know, the vision, about how we're looking at our students holistically. Because in the 21st century, that's what's going to matter, not the scores that we get on standardized tests. I think that also speaks to the MAS resolution that we'll be, you know, talk discussing later on tonight, as well as the fact that many colleges and universities across the country are starting to do away with SAT and looking at those and doing a more holistic look at admissions. You know, and really trying to see who these students are and how they can contribute rather than, you know, not necessarily pull from college. So I think that's important for us to consider and think about, you know, because that's not going to change as we move forward. We're looking for students who are very well-rounded. We're looking for citizens in this world who are very well-rounded. And I just commend you all for the work you're doing because I think you're ahead of the game and you're really good at the people that you're doing. I totally agree. You're demonstrating a level of mindfulness in the way that you're approaching whatever data you have in front of you. So it's not just, okay, we've got to get Johnny's scores up, it's let's look at the whole picture. And I think, I'll just comment on the fact that the fact that this district was flexible during those difficult eighteen months. I know personally, I was a school community member, I got AOs saying that that was something that they perhaps truly appreciated and their students did. So I think whatever that led to, whatever outcome, I think we kept the box and paying attention to that by our own social emotional, right at the top. So, and now you're putting in the pieces to kind of help those students at their own level and with their own needs and with their own agency to build a plan that will get them doing the needs based on that. I mean, I know that the scores, they're the scores, but I think it's really important that we look at how we're going to get each child to reach their potential scores plus all these other things.
I got, I have extremely mixed feelings, so I don't know how I'm going to say this without saying it incorrectly because I don't want to be misrepresented. I just know that in three hundred and sixty-five days from today, I'm going to receive another report. Maybe better, maybe, hopefully it's better, obviously. And the worst part about it is we're comparing cohorts to cohorts. It's not the same child. And that's what's been frustrating me since day one about the MCAS and about all of this. You know, when our students were given their report, term one's going to end on the fifth day of November. And why isn't that we don't receive those statistics, that data? How the students did in the first term and compare that same student to term two and term three and term four? Because I want to see the growth throughout the year. What I'm seeing is you're comparing this class to this class and it doesn't help. Like I want to, I want to follow a freshman class all the way through their senior year and see all their improvement, how they're growing individually without knowing their names. I want to see how it's going. And I've been asking for this for many years now. And so when I see this, you know, Mr. Pierce and I, you know, everything he said, I kind of agree with him. The only thing he said, that's fine. I don't find this fun because this does not give me the information. I don't know how you're using this data with PST, PS, I mean, PS, P, PSAT, thank you. And, you know, and I understand you're going to grant that data and you're going to analyze how the kids are doing through a standardized test. It's always this test, you know, there are no, but what I need to know is how are we improving our students every single year? What kind of data are you using from term one to term two? And last year compared to this year, I understand that ELA is ELA throughout four years. Math is a little different, those algebra, physics, whatever the case may be. But that's the growth that I need to see. I don't see it on this, you know. Honestly, when I see us, and I know how you, I think everybody knows how I feel about when we're comparing ourselves to state average. You know, I'm glad that we're not comparing ourselves to state average because that's not where I want to be. But I do want to compare Johnny's, Little Johnny with Little Johnny the next term. Little Suzie with Little Suzie. Those are the, that's the growth I want to see. But I don't see it in this because this is just a number. And I'm trying to figure out how we are using the data from one class to the other class. And I'm glad you're mentioning about, you know, how the freshman is affecting the sophomore grade and the MCAS and all of that, but where is the data? Why don't we get a report and seeing how we're comparing our current cohort with this year and last year? And I understand we have this test, but we give tests out every single week. Every single week there's a quiz. I know we're getting quizzes, my kids are getting, I know my daughter's getting a quiz every week because she has to see her study it. But I would like to see how, I know how my daughter's doing. I know how my daughter did in the MCAS. I've had that report come in two days ago. But I don't see, this is showing one particular group of students to another group of students. And it doesn't help me. It doesn't help me. Because I want to see how our students are improving from our kindergarten, pre-K all the way to the senior year. And I don't know if there's a tool to do so, but it has to be. That's the only way you'll ever see, because I hate to say this, I have a new team. I'm not evaluating my team on my former team. I'm evaluating them as they progress each year. But you're comparing two, MCAS is just comparing, and maybe because I'm not an educator, I don't understand how we can compare class to class and not student to student. Like if, I wish I had, you know, a ninth grade SAT, I mean, I'm in MCAS and then they're taking the MCAS again as a sophomore so we can actually compare each other. But this is not comparing, in my opinion. So I don't understand, so all, every time I get an MCAS report, I get frustrated, I get upset. And it's not the school, not because they're not performing well or anything like that. I'm just getting upset because I'm not comparing the apple to the apple. I'm not. And I'm just wondering, why can't we get a report after every term and saying, hey, our general, our freshman classes from term one to term two did this, you know, we see the improvement? Because I know our staff sees the improvement because you must be seeing the growth throughout the year. But we're, we as school committee members believe that there are growth in every child from day one to that hundredth and eightieth day, but this report doesn't show it. And it's not fair to the districts, and I mean all districts. It's not fair to our instructors, you know, because, oh, our grades went down or, you know. You know, and I hate to say this, we're at seventy percent, we're at seventy percent. Well, we went from meeting to exceeding, that percentage changed. But guess what? We're still at seventy percent because you know what? It's a different group of students, you know, so, but yet we don't see how many students are struggling in term one. And then by term three, they're no longer struggling because of the rate of block, because of where dealing with the social emotional. So I, I just feel like in three hundred and sixty-five days from today, I'm going to be giving those the same speech again because for some odd reason, I don't see the growth. I hate to say this, I don't see the growth, but it's not fair for me to say I don't see the growth because it's two different groups. So that's my, so like Mr. Pierce said, you know, we can compare ourselves to other districts. That's fine, but I honestly really don't care what the other districts are doing. I care what Somerset's doing. That's all I care about, what Somerset's doing. And I also don't feel I want my child being compared to the class before. I want my child to be compared to her or her cohort being compared to each other.
So on, on that report that you saw as a pattern, there is a growth metric, right? And that's the one when I was just referring to ELA, because that's the one that stands out with me, where our median growth was a sixty, you know, I think the mean growth was somewhere in the high, mid to high fifties.
Fifty percent.
Thank you. That is the only number that we have that, through MCAS, through DESI, that relates how students did when they lasted their tests in 2019 to how they're doing in 2021. That, that tracks the student, overall student growth. Every student has their growth number, and then we have the mean or the median's, you know, data to compare, to look at. But that's the only piece through MCAS. But you're right, there are other ways that we can, we should try to track for it, but then there are always so many variables. So a student can do quite well in quarter one and then something happens in their, in their life. Or it could be a sickness or whatever that happens during quarter two. And then the grades go down. Does that mean that they are necessarily not meeting the standard now as they were? Well, perhaps, or it could be some other factor. It's like there's so many variables that we have to track. But I understand that I know, I've heard you say that probably five or six times now. And I know I will hear that again in the future, but, but yeah.
I think that, I could just give Dr. Bressler, I think she's going to tell you a little bit about.
You can't see my mouth opening because it's not. We, our teachers actually do a lot of work on individual student growth with our SMARTHoles. So when we do our teacher evaluation system, our teachers have what we call student learning goals. And a lot of our departments, I evaluate for the science department, a lot of their work is on seeing student growth over the course of the year. And they have to report out on that at the end of a two-year cycle. And they actually look at individual growth and, you know, goal, one goal that I can think of off the top of my head is increasing performance on lab analysis, on laboratory. And the teacher is tracking as they do common labs over the course of the year, the student growth individually and by the class to see, you know, the goal is to get a certain percentage of growth. And, and we can probably, you know, I can put some of that data together. I mean, it's, it's individual classes, it's not school-wide, but our teachers are reflecting on that in cohorts. And across, I mean, everyone has to have a SMARTHole, a two-year SMARTHole with their professional status teachers. So we do do a lot of that and that's something that we have a lot of discussion on too, is that, you know, students aren't widgets, they're not, they're not, you know, it's not like working in a factory where everything comes out the same. You know, what, what Morgan's growth is, is not what David's growth is. They're two different people and there's an expectation that, you know, you know, your expectation for your child is different than every single child in that school. And it's, it's, it's about that student, it's not about somebody else. So we do try to focus on that. It's hard to give that data and report out on that. You have a ton of kids at this school and you're looking at every single one, but, but we do have a lot of focus on that in our evaluation system, SMARTHoles.
Yeah, I just feel it would be, because, you know, here, you know, this is the part where I think we should be focusing a lot of time as school committee members. You know, we're, along with the budget, but there are many times when we're speaking, you know, like I look at our budgets, I mean our meetings, they spend about twenty, maybe fifteen percent of our meeting based on student achievements and, you know, and then the rest of the meeting is just all non-related items about how these students are achieving. And it's just, you know, I would like to add more of this type of reporting in our meetings. And I don't know what the correct data way would be, but I just feel like I would like to see something throughout the year. And I know we're doing great things because I read about it, I know you're, you're reporting it and things like that. But I would love to see not only, and I've said this before, not only how our students are doing, but how our staff is also doing. Like one of my favorite meetings still is on professional development. I want to know what we're doing to improve teach, so it's not just students. So those are the things that I, because this, it just frustrates me because I just don't believe this data is fair to the students, to the schools, the districts. And you know what, even as a parent, you know, this did not represent how my child did, probably, you know. Oh, I can tell you it didn't, you know, but my child could have done worse, my child could have done better. I'm not going to mention that which way it was, but, you know, as a parent, this doesn't help me. I would be more concerned about how my child's class is doing. And I think, you know, and I don't want names in classrooms, I don't want teachers now to say. But I know when this data came, I had four teachers reach out to me and say, this is my class data. Because it didn't reflect on, which kind of made me, okay, great, this class did well. But now I, what other class didn't do so well and how come? So, so I just want to share that. But to me, it's not so much the school, it's more of the process. I would just like other data, other items instead of one test a year. That's it.
I think that we're also looking, I think that we're in process and progress toward that vision of the graduate, but also we are, in the course of the three-year plan, looking at how we measure some of those things. And as we talk about student agency and student investment in their own learning, I think that we are, we are expecting to create some measures and some opportunities for students to regularly practice essentially those, some of the sharing or showcasing or demonstrating their learning. So, you know, one of the things that we have talked about, and I think that we've been at meetings when we've talked about student-led conferences that they do many times, I mean, even now at elementary schools. And so those are some opportunities as we're talking to those students, meeting with their, you know, advisory teacher or with a teacher to talk a little bit about what their, their plan is, their academic planning. Being able to, again, identify what their goals are and their action plan and then their starting point and their progress toward meeting that goal and then articulate that. And so I think that we are, we are going to continue to, again, cultivate and grow those opportunities and those measures, which I think we're hopeful will give us the chance to share some of that data also. It's just designing that is a process and, but it, it makes us mindful, right, of what you're saying, that if this is a snapshot, we may have some opportunities to do this on a more regular basis moving forward as we design and develop that, which of course, thanks to you here.
And on a positive note, I love that you're, you and your team are sitting down with students every five weeks to figure out about. I know you're, now, would you say you're recommending they go to a certain rate of block or are you mandating? I was just curious about that.
So there's a flow chart.
I'm sorry?
There's a flow chart that students receive where it's kind of like, if then, if, if you're here, they, it's a question. Are you failing in classes? Yes, go over here. No, go over here. And then there's the next box. And it kind of guides them. And if they follow the flow chart and answer the questions, they're allowed to choose a class that fits their needs. If they don't, that's when the teacher kind of gently has that conversation. No, you didn't answer the questions, right? So they're allowed to make choices as long as they can defend their, their choices, so to speak. And again, there are some students, and we're giving this to the juniors and seniors, there are some students that need to do some independent work because they're so busy after school. They might do some independent work, they're passing all their classes, they're, they're doing really well in school, but they're overwhelmed with life. They need that independent work time. And if they can justify that, and if we can justify that, we're allowing that opportunity as well for the students. And, you know, something we've told the faculty at our faculty meeting was, you are all educational professionals. We, it is your educational, you know, professionalism that we want you to use with every student in your group. What does that child need on that day? Do they need extra help? Do they need to make up a test? What do they need to do? Then that's what they need to do and that's what that's like.
In fact, I was in Dr. Bressler's office on Friday afternoon when blue rate of block started. And there was a student that's like, I can maybe, this is burning, came to her office door. And I said, there's a student here and was a student, he was a little bit dumb. Dr. Bressler immediately jumped in to ask and looked in the grade book, identified the one class where the student really needs some help. And within thirty seconds, you know, the kid was on his way to that to the boss. Because that's just, you know, how they're doing. So it's working.
And we are going to keep track of that data, Mr. Mashada. I promised you that last year and we're going to get to it.
Should I say one thing? As a parent, thank you for all the work with blue rate of block. I'm sure my child isn't the one he needs to be, whether he likes it or not. So thank you for that. Also mentioned him to go to the after-school academic support. I'm wondering if maybe in the future, could we, I'm just curious about what the student participation rate is like in the after-school in the Monday through Thursday? Don't need to answer that now, but maybe in the future, just to get a snapshot of the utilization of that. And I'm also wondering, do we, do we do any peer tutoring in the building at all?
So up to this point, on an individual basis, we have, if there's not a program right now. Are you saying about the school that I work at? Our National Honor Society students, one of the ways they fulfill some of their community service, they do peer tutoring after school. And because you mentioned the remote, we have a lot of students who will often to do it via Google Meet, you know, seven o'clock at night after practice and after, you know, after dinner. So I don't know if that's something you added to the list of things, maybe. So I don't know if that's something you added to the list of things maybe to look at. Um, I know sometimes students have a way of really helping one another, um, understand that. The only other thing I would add is, Mr. Mashada, you just know that, I'm sure that administrators in the room know this, but actually, there's a, there's a pretty robust set of data, more about outcomes. And God forbid I'm gonna defend Essie or advocate that she's doing so well. In their Edwin system, there is, there's actually a lot of data that we can look at that isn't so much gonna tell us year-to-year, grade nine, grade ten, grade eleven growth on an individual basis, but does give us pretty good information about how the school's doing in terms of post-secondary outcomes for kids, um, advanced coursework, you know, working down by gender, uh, race, ethnicity, students with disabilities, language gaps, all sorts of things, um, mass sport completion, a whole lot of things. And I think maybe that's something, we haven't retrieved, and we're talking about, you know, maybe graduation requirements, things of that nature, that that's something that we should look at. Because I think that data is actually a lot more useful. This is like thirty thousand feet and my optic at the same time. It doesn't really, you know, sort of pents its standards, we hope, right? And that's the best use of it. But it doesn't tell us a lot about individual kids, especially not year-over-year. I think some of the other data, we could look at, um, as a committee using ourselves and then, you know, and add in to, to do that, it would help us a lot more than this.
Accountability sounds like some of the stuff we have to at least talk about it.
Hi, thank you very much.
Thank you, I think that Mr. Pierce had some, no, no. Another time, Mr. Pierce.
Well, thank you very much, you just talked a little bit about Bresser.
That sounds great.
Great presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, this time we're going to new business. And the first item on this new business, I'm gonna refuse myself from participating in the discussion of the vote. So I'll just step out and, you know, take a minute. Wait for something.
We'll be home early.
We will be back.
Up to you, Noel.
Very kind of flying by.
So the next item on the agenda is a vote to allow the Fall River Public Schools to join the South Coast Educational Collaborative. Any questions about what was included in that?
Again, I hesitate to ask, but Florida's Fall River now, at this point, after so many years, want to join the South Coast Collaborative. I thought that they essentially were a large enough school district to have, uh, programs in-house. And my only concern is that they're going to take more than they're going to give by joining the collaborative. It just, it's gonna make the collaborative that much bigger. Uh, maybe it means they can offer a greater variety of programs, I don't know. But I'm just, I'm just concerned that, um, they may, they may strain some programs. Is there a consensus that they're gonna bring more to the collaborative that they're gonna take?
So, uh, Fall River has, they have, uh, one of the highest, uh, participation rates right now for students. Students enrolled, um, I'm not sure if Fall River or, uh, Totten, uh, which one has the most. But they are sending, uh, many students, South Coast-by-River programs for that, as a non-competitive district. Uh, the hope is that, uh, I know one of the goals is that by having Fall River as a member, um, they may also be able to host some programs too, because they also have some strong programs for space two, where South Coast Collaborative will be able to, uh, to do some of their space, uh, these programs. If you, uh, if you look at a map of this region, uh, so South Coast member districts starting, uh, from the west is, uh, Ziegler, Swansea, Dayton, Lake Hobbit, uh, Somerset, some of the Berkeley, Berkeley, Three Town, Lakeville, Westport, government, Inverton. The only city or town missing from Ziegler to Inverton is Fall River. There's everyone from Westport, coming to Totten, and Three Town, Lakeville, and Ziegler to Inverton. So, but they're already very much a part, just as a non. We've had, we used to host programs here. Uh, we had, um, in Somerset, we hosted a program at Chase Street School. We used to have a program at North Elementary School. And as we've had to, uh, when, when, when we're closed, we need a little bit more space, we were forced to, uh, to take back some of the space that we were using to the library. The same is gonna happen with the middle school in two years. We're not gonna have South Coast been an instrumental part of some of the middle school opportunities. And since nineteen eighty-nine, and, um, it's not a problem with middle school. So, and other districts have also had those same, uh, hinges. Swansea no longer hosts any South Coast programs. So if Fall River joins too, it also, not only is it a healthy part, but it may also help to have programs that are like there rather than us sending students to Galusha, uh, which is a high school in Ziegler, a high school program in Ziegler, where kids are sitting on a van for thirty-five or so minutes, they get there every day. So there are some advantages for having Fall River join. Fall River did attend to a joint a few years ago. And there is, um, one of the requirements is that it is a superintendent board. Not every library board is structured that way, most are, but it is a superintendent-only board. And at the time, uh, Fall River wanted to send a visiting other superintendent. So they were, because of that, they did not join several years ago. So they have been attending this, uh, there's new leadership there, and there's that renewed sense of being a part of our side groups.
Can we say, were they ever a member?
Did they have officially been a member? No, I said, just a renewed sense of, of that, of wanting to join, of wanting to be a member.
You endorse it?
Yes, I, I, um, I voted, uh, as a board member, I, I voted to authorize, uh, to allow, to go to this stuff.
So if Fall River joins, the, uh, number of students that are in the collaborative programs, we said it's a significant number, their tuition drops.
Correct.
And they also, uh, get credit for space, empty space that they might have in their buildings, that they get thirty or forty thousand dollars a year for.
If they host, yes.
So what's the cost to the, to South Coast Collaborative going to be by making them a member and reducing their tuition? And also offsetting tuition by them allowing the collaborative to, uh, take vacant space that they don't have any use for anyway?
When, uh, when this happened, and when Totten became a member of the collaborative, uh, the, so all those benefits occurred. I don't think Totten's hosting, but the others that you referenced did happen. Their membership, their enrollment also increased. So yes, they received a slight discount on the tuition by being a member district, but they also started sending more students to the programs too. So overall, there, there was growth for the collaborative in terms of both programming and, uh-
Any other questions? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that the Fall River Public Schools join the South Coast Educational Collaborative as a member with full benefit privileges and responsibilities, subject to the terms and conditions of the collaborative agreement, approval by the Department of Education, and subject to applicable Commonwealth laws and regulations. So-
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Part two, I'd entertain a motion that the vice chair of the school committee is authorized on behalf of the committee to execute all appropriate documentation to consummate the committee's decision. So-
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And lastly, I'll entertain a motion that the superintendent of schools will serve as the district's representative on the South Coast Educational Collaborative Board of Directors.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go.
While we're on this topic, I think in the past, I asked that the committee who provided the minutes of all, um, meetings of the collaborative, could, could that be revisited?
Yes.
Because we know, we know almost nothing about what the board, what the board is doing. It is a significant, uh, highlight, point, and here, through the South Coast Collaborative. So I think it would be good if we saw the minutes of the board meeting.
For both South Coast and the East Coast. We're also a member of East Coast.
Yes, well, yeah. We don't have enough paper.
I didn't know you backed the ready稿. Okay, so next up, we have, uh, MASC voting delegate and resolutions. The resolutions were near-packed. We've all reviewed a lot of those, given, and then of the, the committee's, uh, pleasure. I think attending, uh, two members, or registered, or two members of the regional committee, two members of the A committee, and a certain ten. So, uh, so as far as that, I guess we have two votes here. One is for the resolutions, if, uh, except, you know, recommending the resolutions. And maybe you take that on first. Did anyone have any comments or questions on the resolutions?
I don't know, if, if someone had a question, a couple of questions, I wasn't sure on how I would vote.
When you're going one by one?
Yeah, I think maybe go by one by one. So you wanna, you don't have to read the whole thing, all that.
No. So to start off, I'll say, I will, um, oh, just to get the conversation going, I'll make a motion to, um, support resolution number one, which is dedicated to school-based programs and services.
So, motion.
Second.
Oh, I'm, Framingham very often comes up with resolutions, proposed resolutions, I guess. You notice there, you want to submit them, other than the MASC board. And I'm just wondering how practical it is for most school districts to have physical health and mental health clinics and services, I'm not sure. Is that something that would be feasible for us to think about in this school district? I'm wondering if it's really limited to, uh, the really large, uh, school districts, the, uh, the gateway cities, uh, kind of thing, and that's where the funding would go. I mean, certainly the concept of providing these kinds of services is great, but I just wonder, uh, from a practical standpoint, talking about replacing emergency rooms, uh, dealing with suicide attempts, I just wonder if that level of expertise is gonna exist in local school districts, aside from the very large ones.
I think that's a good question. I, I think I read this as, would I support it, yes? It's gonna be more beneficial for some schools than others, and most likely won't be necessary in all schools. But I would support the resolution to state that it would be important and beneficial for some school districts to receive funding for this district's work. Um, I, I have heard that, for example, Dirk was open to do that partnering with a health-based clinic. So it's not necessarily that they're gonna employ, they might partner a health facility to, to, to manage. I, I, I think like you, although I'm not sure how it'll work in a district like ours, I think just given the focus on social, emotional well-being, that it makes sense if you get funding to do something like this, in whatever form it is, they have to create it because you don't have the space or staff and the partnership that needs that. So, I think, I would vote in for that.
In fact, I, we, we do have currently at some of the Berkeley, a full-time school psychologist, two adjustment counselors. Uh, there were, there were discussions last year about adding, or adjusting council, where we're getting to a point where, uh, the two, the two who we have, uh, it's difficult for them to, uh, to address all of the, uh, challenges that they're, uh, that they're faced with. And we've also talked about, perhaps, at some point, whether it's adding adjustment counselor or we have a point where it's something to, um, definitely really, uh, form a social worker. So we are seeing those needs continuously rise. And any, any funding that exists to help either them provide better services or for us to connect with other agencies to build those partnerships, so we can quickly offer students those services. I think, remember who I was having this conversation with earlier today? Dr. Bresser's class? I think it was with Dr. Bresser. Uh, there was a student who recently, um, required these services, uh, some outside of school, and there's about a six-month waitlist right now to get those types of services. There's a significant need in this area. So I, I personally would support this resolution. I know I'm not a member, a voting member here, uh, but it's, uh, I think it would benefit schools. And maybe if it doesn't benefit some sub-currently, it certainly would benefit the Boston's, Brockton's, Lowell's, Cleveland's, well, districts, the Framingham's perhaps.
Also, I'm not a chain, I know some districts partner with CCBC, bringing more intensive education. At school, which obviously eliminates transportation issues, but loses a lot of barriers for students. We've got really good jobs, so, and it's still, so, always do in-house and, you know, by partner, with an extra agency, because the wait times are faster now, for kids who are quite in crisis in some cases. And that is an excellent.
You remember, in favor?
Aye.
Sure, I will, um, make, I will make a motion that the, uh, school committee support resolution number two relative to Walmart, the four gaps and Wi-Fi internet.
Second. Motion second, any discussion?
Discussion, yes. So I, I think this is a great resolution, I will support it. But I do want to make a statement that we still should be, continue to be thoughtful about the workload of students at home. Just because students have access to Wi-Fi, you know, one, you know, one-to-one devices, does not mean we should be requiring them to use them in the weekends or, you know, on Friday nights to submit work. Um, that could and should be, you know, essential in that day. And we've seen that more and more with the ones, not here per se, but across the state. And we wanna be mindful of, you know, we've seen a rise in mental health and other things. And we also say that many of us here, um, we work, we go to work, we come home, we have our computers, we go back to work. And it's slippery slope, especially for young people. So just to be mindful of that. And, and this is absolutely a wonderful, um, thing if we can get high-speed internet access to all K-controlled students, um, which is even if we have it, is a mission to be great.
Any further discussion? Framingham, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Framingham, second.
I'll make a motion that the school- I'll make a motion that the school committee vote in support of resolution number three, IDA, IDA, EDA Full Funding Act.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? You're in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion that the school committee vote in support of resolution four, NSES.
Second.
Can we, can we change it to thirty minutes?
Okay, this motion is second, is a discussion, other than the question.
I think this is an absolutely great resolution. It's, it's critical that, I'm sorry if I sound a little bit, I was so thrilled when I released, because it's been something I've been arguing about for years. When my, my oldest went to first grade, she went from like, you know, thirty minutes to twelve, twelve minutes in first grade, and to me, that's really, really tough for young kids. And so I want to, I've been working, I want to see increased of the learning time issues, right? So this really talks about how it wouldn't, you know, be outside of learning time, including learning time, which I'd love to see.
What else? Well, the only thing, the only thing I noticed, it says all students, I don't know, oh no, elementary students. Now, whatever, elementary students, I think you consider middle school as well? No. All right.
Let's do that.
Middle school is mostly secondary. Secondary, okay. You have? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, I'll make a motion that the school committee vote in support of resolution number five, Zero Towers.
Second. Motion second, discussion? You're in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I do. So far, I haven't heard any questions. I will, I'll make a motion that the school committee vote in support of resolution number six.
So we have to end.
Second.
Let's go.
Okay, is there any discussion on resolution number six? You're in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? There's a motion number seven.
I'll make this motion, I'm not sure, I'll just put it on the table, just so that we have discussion. I'll make a motion that the school committee vote in support of resolution number seven, school committees and stewardship.
I will second it, I'll go against it.
I'm not sure I fully understand it, to be honest. I'm not sure if anybody wants to help me understand it.
Well, when I read this, it almost looks like, you know, I do believe that school committees have, you know, they're elected to represent the district, but I also have seen many articles, or have been witness to many other school committees where I felt that every single member on that board should not be on that board. But I don't see Desi coming in and taking, you know, receivership for a school district without cause. So for them to come in and remove the superintendent, but not the school committee, I think if you're going to receive the school, you have to allow, there's a reason why the state's coming in. I, I just think that this is a, a resolution to protect school committee members, which obviously mask represents us, but in my opinion, I don't feel, if the district is in a situation where it needs to be, you know, for the state to come in, you know, you have to have a clean slate, you can't just keep, all right, superintendent, assistant superintendent, administration, you're all gone, but the school committee stays, I just can't see how, how that would work, so.
I don't, I didn't, I might have misread it, I don't know if they remove the school committee, they just, they lessen the jurisdiction, unless I read it.
I think, my reputation is particular.
Yeah, so they're still elected officials.
They're still there, they're there.
Yeah, so, so I don't.
I think, I think receiverships are very, very infrequent, they're only in the most extreme cases. I think this particular resolution rose out of a situation of Holyoke, which is an interesting community because it has a extremely high immigrant population and the school committee, the school committee there, there's one member of the NASC board, who's been on the board for years, and is a member of the whole of the school committee. I guess the feeling is that some, the school committee should continue to have some voice in the direction of the school district, even if the state receiver who's designated by the commissioner of education is essentially running the district. So I think that's the reason why this is here. And I don't know enough, I don't know enough about the Holyoke situation, you know, whether it's, you know, really the better, with some of the ways by the school committee.
I guess I see this a little differently, I, I think that, I'm actually in favor of this resolution. I think for two reasons, one, I'm back to picking on Desi, I'm not sure that they've done a great job through receivership, that their stewardship is, I'm not, I'm not sure it's, that their decisions are necessarily better than elect a board, or the super, superintendent. So that's one question I have, and I, and I think that, for me, I think a school committee absolutely needs to be accountable, it needs to be accountable though to the voters. So there are mechanisms in place, we all can be elected or not re-elected, we can be challenged, and we, you know, so I feel like we all, we have to be accountable, absolutely. I would prefer, in this case, I think there's always a balance, you know, accountable to the department of education, but also accountable to our families, our students, and our community. I don't, I get nervous when it's only one decision maker, and with all due respect to the commissioner of state. But I look at the trend, for instance, in Lawson, which has the only, I think, the only appointed school committee in state, and they're trying, there's a movement now to move away from that, if they try to, there's a movement to try to have that being elected school committee, for the same reason, that it needs to be represented above the community, and it shouldn't be appointed by, you know, proleisms, all sorts of stuff in there, right? So for that reason, I'm actually in favor of this, I think it preserves accountability, but also continues to give the community, the local community, and I think it's pretty clear in, you know, the laws of the Commonwealth, where that local control over individual districts is sort of paramount, and it preserves that, so I'm in favor. Can you just change your mind? Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, go ahead, send David the motion, just in my, uh, all right. Opposed? Aye. One.
I abstain.
I'm also abstaining. Oh, abstaining?
I do, I just don't feel, I don't, I just don't.
So you're two abstaining.
All right, keep going. I'll make a motion that the school committee vote to support resolution number eight, electric school buses. So move.
Motion? Motion second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion on electric school buses?
I think it's great, I think we know, we've talked a lot, Fender, about when he's going to have electric school buses.
Right? As long as they give us thirty billion to do it.
Any discussion on, any discussion on, those are in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And lastly, I'll make a motion that the school committee support resolution number nine, prohibiting the use of Native American mascots. Second.
Motion second, discussion? You're in favor?
I was just going to say, I'm going to vote for support of this, I wish it were a little broader.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're in favor? That's it for the resolution. So the other thing we would ask to do is appoint a delegate to represent the committee.
I miss wanting to.
Well, I'm sorry, because we were certainly nominated, you to be our representative of the delegate assembly. I'm going, I'm going to the conference, but they called Calhoun, I think it was Calhoun Hill, I guess Williams, it comes from Sherman. If nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve. This, I go to the conference for the full Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, but I generally do not stay for Saturday morning presentation. And this year, they moved the delegate assembly from Friday afternoon to Saturday morning, so I guess Mr. Fenstermaker is going to stay at his, well, his home during the course of the conference, so I think he would be extremely, an excellent representation, an excellent representative of our committee, the delegate assembly, so I have.
If someone else is, Mr. Fenstermaker. And I'm, I second. As he's looking at me, knowing I'm going to be there at the same time. Oh, okay.
All right. I nominate Chairman Fenstermaker to be our representative of the delegate assembly. Second.
Motion is second?
Aye. Thank you so much.
Usually we have an alternate.
Oh, yeah, and I nominate Mr. Gar to be our alternate, what delegates.
I feel a cool.
You can zoom in.
I second that nomination. Okay, we have a nomination, the second for Mr. Gar's alternate. All those in favor?
Aye. Again, thank you.
Just while we're on this topic, this may be a conference, or this particular business meeting, I've attended many, Mr. Pierce has attended more, I believe, because I stopped after eight years, and like, I just can't do this anymore. But for them moving into a Saturday becomes a, it's really a burden on school committee members, you know, most people will do the third, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so when you're, when you're out there, you may want to express that, if you feel that way. And then the other thing is, this day and age, I think an annual business meeting is, it does have some value, especially when they're giving the reports, they may want to, and I understand it's a moneymaker for them as well, but they may want to get into the concept of zooming in, let people zoom in, because I think it would be something that I would call in from, unfortunately, at Maine, but, but I just think, you know, they may want to enter the 21st century.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I could typically miss schedule that for Saturday, it's almost like you're driving people away more than playing.
Okay. So we'll get on that, and move on to some of the updates. We had a meeting of actually budget committee, and mainly the capital fund, because same staff, same members, we had a joint meeting with ourselves a few weeks back, and it was mainly to look at some of the, well, we might have a bunch, probably might have a bunch of shortfalls, and some ways that we might, on the food service side, and look at some other things, and then there was some funding we had, some of the areas we wanted to get from, but there was some of the, that had some money to, the food, the food service out, that was further valuation, some of it. So, we were looking at what we're going to do, because our E and D has been in the head. So we were looking at ideas or concepts that we would use to bring money out of the E and D account, back into the working budget to supplement some areas. One of the areas we were looking at was the school lunch program, and determination was, it wasn't really needed, just kind of this flexible commitment, built part of that cap. We looked at some of the capital improvements that might be good to use for that, but there's not an immediate plan for those, so those kind of came off the table. So then we came back to what we've mentioned, I think a number of times now, and the recommendation of the, of the committees was that we take forty thousand dollars from our E and D, E and D funds, transferred into our budget and use it as a combination to hold a, hold a, um, obligation. Did I get that a lot right, please?
Yes, and maybe Mr. Tarah could remind everybody of what our whole, unfunded, the whole capital liability is.
That's a good news for me. Well, I meant.
Did you mention it? I'm sorry.
No, I did, I did, I didn't grab that number on my way out the door, but, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's approximately between nineteen million, approaching twenty million US dollars, so.
This takes care of that.
Yeah, so this, yeah, forty thousand dollars is good, is a good, I'm sure.
I want to answer a question, I know that in the past, we've talked about some one-time influence to our fields, I don't mean to bring up cameras, but is this something that we would look to other funding to address? I know we talked about the drainage at the baseball field, just being one particular issue that has to be done. Would we use leftover project funding for that, because it's eligible, or did the committee consider that as well, like those kinds of investments?
If I can answer that, because I chair the capital and maintenance committee, and we, we had a meeting, which I believe we've already reported on, and we scheduled another meeting soon, and we'll take a look at some of those projects, and perhaps make a recommendation, try to prioritize those in the recommendations, to, I certainly have my eye on that money that's left from the construction project, because some of these issues that we still have, actually date back to the construction, the original construction, so.
And forty thousand, does that count for the entirety of what we need to move out of E and D, or that is just your initial recommendation right now?
So we're approaching the five percent threshold based on our projected operating profit loss, we have a profit after losses of about a hundred and eleven million, I'm sorry, a hundred and eleven.
Whoa.
A hundred and eleven thousand. So if we added that hundred and eleven thousand to the already certified E and D dollars, we would be over that five percent threshold, this would bring us under the five percent, and that's, is that un-audited, Doctor, but I think it would be pretty close to that.
And if forty thousand, I think it would be reasonable, if they're paying, it's not going to make a dent in, but it certainly won't make a dent in some of the other projects, and they may be on a contract.
It is, it's a matter of process, I've worked, contacted, as always, just getting the weather draft, it's a sense of another communities, and I gave a couple of ways money would be transferred to, so she had to, which would be, was, to make a decision.
So do we need a look at the?
Yeah, I think that we actually have to vote to amend our budget, increasing it by forty thousand dollars, but providing that the increased fund will come by transfer from the E and D account, so it will not increase the assessment to the individual communities, and then we have to give notice to the individual communities that we have increased our budget by forty thousand dollars, but it will not impact on their assessment, and hopefully, it will, if they don't call a special time meeting, within forty-five days of voting down, then it's accepted, and as much as we're not increasing the assessment of the individuals, and all the people, or the, the issue.
Is that motion? Yeah, okay, so.
That was a little more.
That was a little more.
That's a process. And what we've done is we've kind of covered subcommittee updates and what business plan happens. So, if there's a.
Because it wasn't posted as a motion, you know, that we were going to make a motion to, oh, it's further down?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Because I was like, I didn't see that on the motion. All right, very good. So, that's, that's, so, so I'd be entertaining the motion to amend the 2021, 2022 budget to increase it by $40,000 coming from the excess, excess efficiencies account in order to deposit the $40,000 into other post-employment benefits account.
So.
Second discussion.
This is further down on it. It says 2020, 2021. All right. Am I reading this wrong?
It's a typo. No, it was, it's surplus from the Friday. Do we amend this or?
No, it would be the FY21, what can I increase in FY20 budget? I'm sorry. I was just making sure. Thank you.
That's actually the FY22, like, right? That's the increase. The increase, yeah, it's on the FY21 surplus.
Good, thank you.
Can we put a discussion on that? All in favor?
Before you go on to policy, on November 5th, we have a joint meeting. I think it would be a great time to have a report from the shared position update. I believe that subcommittee was formed, and I don't know if you've met at all. But I would like, I think it would be a great time to have a joint, since we have a joint meeting and we're about to go into the budget season. But also, also evaluate the roles of those shared positions and if it still makes sense, the type of thing.
That's something I think you're doing on October 28th for the first time. All set? Moving on to policies for the first meeting. Another big, big day to the policy department. Did anyone have any comments on the change, on the changes that propose?
I, I could go through them one by one. They, the ones that are listed here are rather perfunctory. In many cases, they're simply changing pronouns from its further to their. Maybe change, change references instead of saying Somerset Public Schools to the school district.
Anybody have questions about specific policies, or if you prefer, let me go through them one by one? No. Remember, I'd like to do that. I have a comment on a few of them, just for maybe my own presentation. On the budget deadline, who's scheduled the DPC?
All right.
It's referencing budgets to selectmen, will be cooperatively, certainly. But is that selecting to, to D and D's, to our case?
You could allow me to bring, bring that up, because I think that's, you know. And I, I have some of them in front of me, and some of them might have to be third to last, because that would make you more. Yeah, you could. I think the concern was there was that. There was a question here about the requirement of submitting a budget by a certain date. And the date was not a date that I thought was valid, not a date. It may have been the date under prior law. So, we changed the language to provide that whatever dates are assigned, the final date of the submission of the budget cycle will be arranged cooperatively with the school committee and finance committee and shall be submitted on or before the date established by state law. And so, we removed the specific date, which was a very early date, something like in December. And it's never a date that we observe. My understanding is that our obligation is to have a budget approved by the end of March and submitted to the, to the communities within, within a certain number of days after that. So, we made the language just generic so that we're simply going to comply with existing law at the time, rather than a specific date.
What is the final exception?
Yes, I was questioning on this, that we were selecting this, this, that.
Well, I think the budget does get, gets submitted to the board of selectmen and as a courtesy to the finance committee. It has to be. Yes.
Then I had the notification of school committee meeting. Which one is that? The D and A, this is, this is the reason why. It excludes, and the 48-hour notice, who says, and Sunday's been our case? Because the, I believe, because the Berkeley Town Office is closed on Fridays. We have, we have to speak on Friday.
No, because regional school districts are allowed to post their notice and agenda on their website, unlike municipal committees. So, we generally, Robin generally does everything she can to get the notices to the Berkeley Town Court by Thursday. But in actuality, as long as we post it on our website, 48 hours in, we have to believe in five of the open meeting law.
Good, thanks. All set on that? So, we, as standing in motion to accept the first reading of the policies, no need to be agenda. Second, motion is second. Any sort of discussion?
I just have, you know, before we finalize, there are many misspelled words. And for me to find them, that's amazing. But if we could, for instance, one religious is religion, I mean, religious with an N instead of a S. So, if you can just look through those, the ones that have the rules, belchak, belchak. And some words are together, they may be.
All in favor?
Aye. I suspect, Mr. Machado, that the misspellings preexisted.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Like, it's true.
We only looked, we only looked at the proposed changes, not the spelling.
I'll tell you what, I'll go for it.
Okay, well, that would be much appreciated, so Robin doesn't have to.
That would be great. Thank you for volunteering.
And when I say aye, I mean my life.
Okay. Couldn't do that, you good? All right. Business and financial management, we've kind of already covered that stuff. I'm finished. Business finalized. Paul, repeat. Take your topics.
Okay, so, the, and I appreciate everybody for responding to the call. I appreciate Robin for sending them out, all the guys. There were only one date that appeared to have nearly unanimous participation. I talked to Ms. Andrews, that was December 11th, December 11th. And she has a longstanding commitment that she can only be here for the month. So, I prepared, I drafted an agenda, which I'll share with all of you, based on the feedback that we got. And actually, I would change it again after today's feedback. But, um, and I put down, Ms. Andrews, I put down December 11th just for conversation purposes. But the other option we have is to move it out to January, if maybe it's going to get everybody there. But if we, if you recall our discussion, and I used kind of the previous templates. This goes to 2:30, above it says three, but it goes to 2:30. But the plan is that we try to end early if possible. I figure it's, you could only be here till one, or twelve.
Yes, except to occur the rats from my mother.
No, I figure so. So, so we can look at other dates. I figured I didn't want to come empty handed. Let me just show the agenda, and we can send out another meeting call.
I'll be here an hour early is the reason to not move the meeting, you know.
Well, I put the college and career readiness at the top before that talk. So, if you recall, we wanted to kind of look at where we are. And we have a little bit more of the vision of the graduate in two meetings, and we can maybe even move this up a little bit more. We don't have to take that whole time in the beginning. But the way we had talked the last meeting is that we would look at where we are right now with, you know, what our key goals are, what the budget forecast is, looking at school building projects that we might have on the, on the, on the horizon, and look at any extra funds or additional funds. Just kind of create a picture of where we are with resources and needs. And then we were going to look at some key areas. We talked about special education and SEL, actually, I should put special education slash SEL programs. Graduation requirements as well. And then maybe next steps. How do we move those current programs to fit those future needs, given those new resources that we might have? And then out of that, we wanted to pick a couple of key things. In addition was college and career readiness. We talked about early college and Ms. Andrews offered, because she has a lot of experience in Taunton, to talk a little bit about that. I participated in a, a program yesterday on P-Tech, which I was so excited about. And I think it's, it doesn't, it can be a compliment to it. And I know, kudos to Mr. Spunova, who, like, way before I even heard about P-Tech, or had already started looking at maybe making it, making our district one of the first in Massachusetts to do it. But what it is, the way I look at it, and Mr. Spunova, you can correct me, is that it's, it's not geared towards just the high achieving students. It's geared towards all students and allows them to get experiential learning, contact with the outside world, develop those skills so that they can be employable upon graduation. But also potentially provide them with either an associate's degree or at least a certificate that puts them on the right track. So, I think we talked about, you know, how do we compete with vocational schools and other schools. I looked at it as, this is a way for a lot of students who would like to go to a comprehensive college, comprehensive high school. This, this would attract them away from a diet or, or another vocational school. So, I was very excited about it. I think we already have the building blocks between the bioscience and the computer tech. I think it's already, and I know you've already had conversations with Bristol Community College. So, I really think that's where I'd love to spend the whole day, actually, talking about those kinds of things. But I wanted to bring it to the committee. Because I think that that, correct me if I'm wrong, it will require some shifts in how we, a little bit of how we do things. It requires some investments and relationship building with outside groups, which isn't impossible. But we just need to know about it as a school committee and be able to support it, I would think.
It goes hand in hand with what we think of with innovation pathways from all those discussions that we've had. And as I, as you said, yeah, we attended to, we got a foot in the door of P-Tech several years ago when, when they were partnered with State of Rhode Island. Governor Ramondo at the time wasn't sure about doing bringing it to Rhode Island. A few of us had a conversation, and, and at the time, they had just gone to Rhode Island, and we're not looking to expand beyond that. But it's nice to hear that, meaning they're ready to, to look at other districts and then choose it. So, hope to have that conversation with them once again.
Yeah, so I think it's just an exciting opportunity for us to, to, I guess what I'm trying to do is, how can we move the needle with some key aspects of what our strategic plan is with respect to social emotional learning, with respect to college and career readiness? And then if we end with, what's the role of a school committee in advancing these issues? So, we're clear on how we work with and support the administration. So, I'm open, this is draft, so if you want to tweak it, write to me that this is kind of what I'm trying to divide it. With a little bit of break in food, please.
I think this is a great draft, thank you. I would ask if anyone would interest in moving it to January? It doesn't have to be for me. I just know that this is a very tough time. It's the end of the school year, the semester for both the work and school for myself. I'm not sure. I'll call you president in a simple, but I will be there if we tweak that date.
All right, well, we can send out, I just wanted to check with the superintendent and staff to see, is there anything of particular importance, Mr. Tarot, with respective decisions we have to make with ESR funds that would, would require us to meet prior? Maybe we just have a meeting just on that in December and move this to, which is fine. And maybe I could be better that way. What are your thoughts? And we got to finish this up.
I, I think if, if we move it a little more to your regular agenda, we could probably address.
Okay.
Yeah, we're actually, the ESR grant was due until April 4th. We haven't heard initial feedback yet. Once we get approval, I will also present what the, what the goal is right now for use of those funds with the idea that there are elements that are also possible along the way to maybe adjust to that week's schedule.
So, maybe we can take that off and have some dialogue on that between now and the end of the year. But then we look to have a more focused discussion in January, where we all can be there and really focus on those. Would you agree that those are kind of key topics, like the college and career readiness, social emotional learning, and how we grow off special education?
Yes, without a doubt. And I would like, now, now I have this, if I look to sit down with Dr. Bresser too, review with her and see if there are any, she has any suggestions for all the topics that she thinks would add to what's already here.
And I try, you know, Mr. Pierce gave me some suggestions. I kind of tried to put them there a little bit of, you know, we had talked about. I think P-Tech, the presentation, the superintendent from the Dallas High School District was offering to put together a how-to packet for districts. And Mass Business Alliance for Education is offering to really work with districts to get this launch. I don't know how far that is. So, when I was thinking, we have computer science as an innovation package, it might be, you know, it might be good topics and the other ideas that got it along. So, I just thought it was a good overall topic for us to focus on. Is that okay? So, I'll send out another.
Sorry, Robin. That's okay. I said some, a lot of, you know, just a little.
And we'll, we'll, two hundred and eighty, we'll be spending some time on some of these topics.
There, you know, there's one, there's one topic that I would like to see us be able to squeeze in through the first section of maybe the second one, from 10 to 11, which is the start, start of the school day. I mentioned that as subcommittee unit. When I had my annual physical, my doctor asked me how much I'm working. And when I mentioned the school committee, he immediately lost a lot of interest in my physical condition and told me that as a school committee member, if there was anything that I accomplished, it should be changing the beginning of the school day. He said that the medical psychological data is overwhelming that high school students benefit across the spectrum by starting the school day later, not only academically, but socially emotionally, and athletics and other activities. And he lived in Barrington, and he said it took parents, or a group of parents in Barrington, years to get it accomplished, but they finally ditched. years to get it accomplished, but they finally did change the start of the school day to 8:30 in the back. That was a compromise, I guess the goal was to get it to 9:00 AM, but they didn't accomplish that. So anyway, we have talked about this in the past. I asked, I believe they had a later start in the school day in Ashland. And one of the questions that always arises, well, what do you do about transportation? So I asked him, this was a couple of school committee conferences ago, was transportation a problem? And his response was, you know what percentage of the high school students ride the bus? So apparently they didn't find transportation to really be a problem, the problem that's, you know, often presented to be. So I'd like for us to just look at that as one of the issues we look at, where it says take a more closer look, maybe we could include it as a topic there.
Yeah, and I can pull together some research. There were two great studies that showed a decrease in, increase in test scores, because we all care about test scores, right? But a decrease in mental health issues and a decrease in suicide rates in districts who start it later, as well as a decrease in the number of accidents, car accidents in some bigger cities. So it was really, I read a lot on it because it makes perfect sense.
It immediately sent to me a study by the American Pediatric Society or Association that they're came along on the topic.
And they seem the younger kids should start earlier, too.
Right, that's exactly the point. The younger kids are fine starting early because they're running around.
If I can just make a quick suggestion, is it possible for us to have a working continental breakfast? Because I would rather have our lunch, you know, versus, you know, you can always start earlier than having a half hour lunch and then have to, sometimes having one hour break is very helpful after a long day. But the other thing would be, when you say budget forecasting, I thought that was, originally we had discussed possibly having, how the committee would like to see how the budget process would be, is that forecasting looks like, okay, how we're doing with our current budget, but...
Well, I was looking at that kind of a big picture, so, and maybe my notes weren't clear, but I was thinking of like, here we find, for example, if we look at special education costs, right, we know how many tuitions might be projected to leave the district. We also know how many might be coming in. We know that we might want to fund this kind of program to bring in. So I was looking at that, you know, what kinds of costs do you anticipate? We know, you know, what other costs might be, what we expect these costs to increase as far as maintenance of the building. So kind of looking big picture.
Multiple years.
Multiple years.
Not a one-year snapshot.
Right, not a one-year snapshot, but how do we look, how do we just kind of have in the back of our mind, in this year we might see some savings, but in the next year we might not. I don't even know if that's feasible, Mr. Sotaro, but I just think maybe we can even just throw it up there to kind of just give us some context.
Yeah, I think in my past experience, you know, we usually did five-year forecasts, just to see what the five-year forecast, even if they just, okay, if it's a 3% increase on salaries, it's a 10, 12% increase on medical, you do those five-year forecasts just to see what they look like. I think what you're talking about is different programs implemented and what's the courses and how do you plan for that? As maybe as a decrease, not a district tuition cost, and how do you blend those into, we'll do a more deeper dive into budget planning.
Right, I mean, and maybe it's not foster, but just kind of like identifying ballpark and where you think you might see some increases. These are things that, just in my experience on that, when I was on the budget committee, you don't really have much time to get into when you're in the throes of budget development. But a workshop like this is a chance for us to take a step back and just say, hey, in the future, we're going to be looking at X, Y, and Z. Or, I mean, if we know that innovation pathways is someplace we want to go, you know already that the bioscience one is a popular one, you could say, we're going to need to get another staff person to be doing that, just to kind of put out there for the future, what are the things we're going to be looking at?
And then one other thing that I know I would forget to type you, take it over to you, you know, we do talk about social emotional needs of our students, but I think we always tend to forget the person who's standing in front of the student. I would love to know, you know, obviously with social media, you know, they take, a lot of our team members take a beating and I know that we, some of the exit interviews, well, I'm a little afraid that, some of the exit interviews that I have speak to, some of the members who have left the district have said that a lot, has a lot to do with the social emotional of the outside world, and it's something that we probably have limited control over, but probably just having people in our roles standing up to all the bullyingness that's happening online.
I'm sorry, what was that word, Victor?
Bullyingness.
Bullyingness? I thought that's what you said. I tend to agree with you, but I'm...
Yeah.
You coined a new word, I think.
Yeah, well, that's fine. But I just feel like we need to address that issue as well.
And I thought, I mean, again, we had talked about getting a facilitator to keep this kind of going and suggested maybe Tony Bennett. I still remember Tony Bennett's conversation about that at our last meeting. So I would, I think you could leave a lot of these topics in. And so when we get a date, we haven't reached out to him yet, but when we get a date, I think he would be good to speak on that, too, how we can support those issues. But I will add a bullet that is, you know, under special education, maybe SEL supports for students and staff. What do we have now and what can we do?
Great.
Okay. Great.
Looking forward to it.
I agree completely that social media is a problem across the board and it can involve bullying and I try to stay out of that. I'm not on Facebook, I don't do any of that stuff. But I think there are rare instances when the social media indicates safety of our students, that it requires a thoughtful response, a measured response from either the chair of the committee or superintendent.
Okay. I'll rework this, we'll get some dates in.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the Madison information, Somerset, Berkeley K-8 updates.
Thank you. So the middle school is working on their vision of the graduate. Have they, has it been in collaboration? I didn't ask him, but I was assuming that she's been working with you all on the vision of the graduate, trying to align?
Dr. Brossler and I attended the first leadership meeting of the year, one of the first in Berkeley. We went with Superintendent Ryan and principals, assistant principals, and explained what is it that we've been doing in Somerset, in Somerset, Berkeley, and just seeing if Berkeley would like to also, you know, support and work toward that same vision. So we did present it to them. We haven't necessarily heard back to see what's going to take place, but we did go and share everything and see if we can pull it in.
Great, they're definitely working on socio-emotional learning. They created an advisor advising program, which is very huge for the middle school now, where you have six students that are connected with an adult mentor or peer mentor, no, an adult mentor in the school. And they implemented that just last week. So it'd be interesting to see how that goes and the goals and the outcomes that they're looking to get out of it. They're also working on the eighth grade DC trip, which just the whole community is excited about. It's not anything, we've never gone out of state for a field trip. And they've just wanted to thank the Somerset Middle School, the friends there that have really been helping them figure out what to do and how to do it. The elementary school, we're doing a lot of work on curriculum this year, aligning curriculum and just reviewing what we've been doing the last few years. And we started for the first time now in over a year, we started our after-school programming. We do, you know, fun activities, the cooking that they do, the rep hat of fun, you know, dog academy. It's been, it's been, you know, a year and a half now since we've done that, so the kids are really excited about that. And those are my updates.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Gore?
I had two things I emailed you about. One was the, writer?
Oh, no, on the update for...
Right, that's, that was part of the K-3, we don't link the discussion on that. And the building, and the building rentals, I don't, we don't link the discussion of the K-3, K-3, but we picked them both over to you. Mr. Spinoval, I saw the other day, some repairs going on in South Elementary Room.
Yep.
They're looking really good. I saw the guys, they're pouring out, I was very, but they're working hard up there.
And also in the middle school.
So we had some building repairs going on and that's all I had up here.
Other things that we did speak about, you know, we did, we are looking at our capital plan. One of the items, though, we are having a special article to ask the town to give us $250,000 from our, the money that we gave back to put in our capital plan. At our next meeting, I've asked the chair to place it again on the agenda because it was a very quick, I feel that that amount is too low. I think it's, we do have some capital plans that we do need in our schools. I know we have an engineering support to kind of look at the chase and also the structural chase, possibly using ESR funds. Again, with the stairway at NOD, ventilation at South, building committee. Anybody who's served on the building committee knows it's a weekly meeting, we're meeting tomorrow at 7:30, 7:30? Yeah, 7:30 every Thursday. It's moving along. It's really exciting to see how everything is taking place.
Is that 7:30 AM?
7:30 AM, bright and early. And as Mr. Gore did speak, and then the other topic that we did speak was traffic at the schools, the morning drop-offs are really, you know, as we experience here at the high school as well. One of the things that we are going to, I'm the chair of the districting committee, it's something that we'll be calling, I'll be calling the administration, Mr. Gore, together to possibly look at grade level schools or whatever is the best option for our K-8 students. And also we'll be talking about transportation. So it may fit quite well regarding, you know, times at the high school and other, you know, but obviously that the high school move is something that's extremely difficult through negotiations and all of that. It's not something that happens in the last minute, but those are the things that we're going to be working on in the K-8 level.
All right, are your building committee meetings Zoom meetings or are they in person?
Zoom. Join us. I'll send you the link right after the meeting.
One of the secretaries in my office said to me within the last week, you know, I was looking through my house and I came across a video of your retirement party. This was when I was in the office on a Friday afternoon, yeah, dated December of 2011. So I'm really, started to really seriously work toward retirement, see whether I'm being more successful in the second decade of my effort.
Topics not anticipated by the chair, but he has said nothing on that. Action items for future meetings.
I would like to give a report on the insurance trust committee meetings. We had one this week and we'll be having one next week and a few things that I'd just like to bring the committee up to date on, so.
Just a fence maker, if I may, and this is really a topic first for, I think, the policy subcommittees for both districts, but the town of Somerset, either just recently, maybe as of today or in the near future, police officers will begin wearing body cams. So there's a discussion about body cams on our SROs. So I know we have a vigorous surveillance policy. So I think, I'm assuming the best place to begin that conversation, which is with the net policy subcommittee.
Should that be first with the security committee type thing? Because in R, you're going to enter the executive session for that first at that policy subcommittee? I'm just thinking. Well, I'm just throwing it out there, you can make the decision between your, your teams and the subcommittee.
I would imagine there may be other districts that have tackled with this.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same.
Two.
To what I know of, in the state.
So we could look at what they've done there. I don't know if MASS has come up with any recommendations yet or not.
I actually emailed all superintendents a week and a half ago, just seeing who has done this. With Dylan was, is he actually the only one who responded, saying they are, they have? And Lemster is, I believe it's Lemster, is in the process. But MASS executives responded, saying that they were going to put this on their next executive board meeting because they were unaware that this was something that was beginning to happen.
For other items for future meetings, and I don't know if this is even an option yet, any of our bonds or debt able to renew? Because we just received a $6 million ban for our meeting, middle school, and it was 1%. So I don't know if we qualify to, I think I had a brief conversation with, was it you, Jeff, regarding that we may not be, but if, maybe we should look into it to see if any of them can be turned, you know, 1% is crazy.
I think 2024, I think it's 2024 is the last, is the first quote we'll feature on the bond. I'll just, I'll pull your truck, I'll just reconfirm.
Something that I'm, I thought about too, I thought it was 22. I actually own some, Somerset Regional School District's bond and my statement indicates that they're callable 22, so I don't know, don't expect that. But they're certainly not callable right now.
This time the minutes in our, distributed to the group, do any comments on the minutes, the executive board?
I guess I have a couple of comments of September 14th. There's one, on the 14th minutes, I believe there's one place where it says, yes, on the, at the beginning it says, Mrs. Gagbiati made a motion to accept, and then it says, Mr. Machado moved the motion. So I think Mr. Machado probably seconded that motion. And then on the second page at the top, the second paragraph in the last line, it says, budget planning and the roles and objectives of school committee members. Is it roles or goals?
No.
It says roles, I wonder if this... Budget planning and...
Role and objectives of school committee members, like how can we...
Okay. So it's just that one.
Okay. So in the motion to accept September 14th, open session is amended.
Submit.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm anticipating motion for acceptance in the executive session, so September 14th. Submit.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And to the public info tonight. Okay. Executive session pursuant to Massachusetts law chapter 38, section 21A2, to conduct strategy session preparation negotiations with non- conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-reunion personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-renewed personnel, and the chair said declares, Jeffrey Schoen over, superintendent, pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter 38, section 21A3, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining litigation, and in open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public party, and the chair said declare, collective bargaining, American Federation of State, municipal employees, proprietary craft professional units, and litigation elevated realty asbestos contamination materials of child arrest removal, or inform some sort of, the committee will not return to open session.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second, favoring Mr. Pierce.
Aye.
Ms. Gagbiati?
Aye.
Ms. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. Gore?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Mr. Machado.